...of getting better acquainted with terrific semifinalists for State Board of Education, for the superintendent of Public Instruction, sorry. We're happily joined by Randy Lepa. Randy is the superintendent of Livonia Schools, distinguished educator, has a terrific record of education achievement, and much thanks to us for offering himself as a candidate for state superintendent. Randy, you probably know most of the board members. Eileen Weiser, Kathy Strauss, President Emeritus of the Board, Lupe Ramos Montini from Grand Rapids, Pamela Smith-Pew, who's our newest elected member, Cassandra Ulbrich and Michelle Fecto. Richard Zyley, board member, is not physically with us, though Marilyn and he are conspiring to make sure he watches the videotapes closely. And Karen McPhee, the governor's education advisor, who's governor's a member of the Board ex officio, is also tuning in. Hi Karen, and going to be with us as we face some tough deliberations, given the quality of the candidates that have put themselves forward. So again, Randy, thank you for putting yourself forward. And as you know, we're going to spend an hour and a half or so having you first answer the couple of questions that we posed to all candidates in advance to help us get started. And then we have 20 questions that we're going to ask in turn, the same questions that we're asking all the candidates, and provide time for you to quiz us, as well as offer any other comments you want, as you offer your services and ability to help us improve achievement in Michigan. So, thank you, Randy, for being with us. And as you know, the first two questions were, for all the candidates, tell us specifically major things we need to do to improve student performance in Michigan and make it an educational leader in the nation. Describe what you'll do to ensure the superintendent and Board of Education are effective in making educational progress. So invite you to address those in any way you see fit, and then we'll talk more about important education issues.
Great. And if it's okay, I've got a handout that I'd like to pass around. You'll have some notes in regards to some of the key items that I'll cover. And let me just first say what an honor it is to be sitting here. I'm so excited, not only for myself, but I'm excited with the group of candidates that you've chosen. And I hope you all know the amount of credibility that you have, based on the candidates that have come forth. I think we've got a great group of individuals that can help local school districts move forward. And a lot of my comments that you're going to hear today really has to do with focusing on what's going on at the local level, which is where my passion's at. And what I've done for 28 years has been working directly in local schools, helping kids. And so, what I'd like to do is start first with the issue or the question in regards to what the State Board of Education and the superintendent can do, working together, to make sure that we're effective in moving progress forward in Michigan. I think this is an important place to start, because really, at the end of the day, if we have a good foundation with how we work and how we do what's important to us, that's going to impact all of the other things that we're going to talk about, both in regards to one of the major initiatives that we want to work on here in Michigan, and I'm sure a lot of the other topics that we'll discuss today. So, to me, it all starts right there. Our ability to work together and our ability to govern is going to be very telling, as it relates to our ability to move our agenda forward. And so, that's really first and foremost. And I think having a good working relationship with the Board, the Superintendent's Office, knowing that we're working together, we're on the same page, and we're moving forward united, will mean a lot to those people in the field that are doing the work. They're going to be able to see that and know that, okay, the top's moving in the same direction and we need to follow. And so, that's a big, big component in that. And we do that by setting expectations for ourselves, working together, and building a team. I think that's really, in my time in public education, has been my strength, is working with people, getting people to work together as a team, and getting people to move along, which it's great to be a team, but if you're not getting anything accomplished, then you're not really making any progress. So, that's, I think, then, one of my strengths and the reason that I'm here in front of you today. Because, as you know with my background, I've taken a pretty untraditional track to come through, both being a superintendent and coming before you. And so, that's really, really important. And I think if we have expectations for each other, we know how we're going to work together, we're communicating well with each other, then we're going to be able to send a very clear message, as we're moving forward, of how we want to see work get done throughout the state of Michigan. And that's what I'd highlight is, in order for us to have a good game plan on some of these objectives that we want to accomplish, we need to create a shared, what I'll call a shared vision. And so, we have to create this picture of where we want to go as a state, and we need to identify what's important to us. And when I talk about that, I want to emphasize the word "shared," because the more people that we have buying into what we believe is important, the more ideas that we have as part of that process, the more power we're going to have in moving forward. And so, when I talk about a shared vision, it's just not my ideas, it's just not the ideas of the State Board of Education, the staff of the Michigan Department of Education, it's really about all stakeholders' ideas. What are Michigan citizens saying? What are the people on the ground talking about as relates to what's important to education here in Michigan? What's our legislative branch talking about? And we know that they play a significant role in this. And so, working together, I think there are a variety of things that we can come to agreement on, and have be a part of a common, shared vision, that really can get us all marshaled and working forward and working together to move forward. So, that's a big piece for me, as it relates to how we can be effective and get our work done. When you look at the packet that I gave you, the very last page that you see is a shared vision that we created in the Livonia Public Schools. And I'd just like to talk a couple of minutes about what we did there, because it was a very unique process. We have a district school improvement team, just like every school district across the state has a district school improvement team. Their responsibility is to have a district school improvement plan and to be moving forward on the plan. And when we started our work many years ago, we knew we had representation on that district school improvement teams, the teachers and support staff and parents, et cetera. But they didn't represent the feelings of every single person within our community. And so, what we literally did was, we went out, and our group, our group of stakeholders, went out, and we had multiple meetings across our community. We talked to over 2,500 people, and we asked them four basic questions. We asked them, "When you think about your school district, what do you envision it being?" We asked them, "When you think about what's important to you in your child's education, what does that look like?" We asked them, "When you envision our school district five years, our school district five years from now, it will be." Very open-ended questions. And we asked them at the end, "For students, what outcomes are most important to you?" We received over 16,000 comments when we went through this process. We themed those comments, and what you see in front of you is the work of that shared vision that we created. And part and parcel of that process is, we really felt that everybody had something in that vision that meant something to them. And so, every single initiative that we have in our school district, when we build our budgets, when we do staffing planning, when we take on initiatives as it relates to student achievement, it doesn't matter what it is, we measure ourselves as one of our measures against our shared vision in our school district. And so, if we can create that kind of shared vision, getting a lot of stakeholders involved, I think that can be very, very powerful for us as a group, and it's going to make our group and our work that much more meaningful. And again, answering the question, "What can we do as a group to make sure that we're moving, moving the educational progress in our state forward?" If we have this shared vision, if we're working well together with any unified front as a Board and the Superintendent's Office, we're going to be that much more powerful when we're trying to get this work done. So, that's a foundation for me. And I'll go into, if it's okay, then the next question, as it relates to some of the things that I think are very, very important for us to do here in Michigan, to move the needle as it relates to education progress. And when I mention the things I'm going to mention, I want to highlight, just going in, that there are going to be a lot of good ideas, as it relates to this. There's no one person that has all the ideas in regards to how to move Michigan forward. And, you know, we're in a pretty good position. We have a lot of good research, we have a lot of good things going on here in Michigan, and we have a lot of good models across the country that can help us, when we think about what we want to do, as far as the key priorities to help us move forward. Going back to the shared vision, I think if we have that foundation, I think several of the things that are important to us to move Michigan forward and making us a leading state here in our country, will be coming out of that work. And again, that will be shared work, with ideas from a lot of different people. And I think those themes are going to come up, and they're going to be very, very helpful for us, not only in regards to identifying what we need to do, but having buy-in to making sure that we're moving forward on the work. And so, I want to highlight some broad topics, and you'll see them in your handout. Teacher quality is probably the one I'll spend the most time on, and the one I'll talk about the most to me, both short-term things that we can do and long-term things. Setting high expectations for students and staff, making sure that we have clear expectations for them, and important, supporting them in getting there, and I'll expand on that. Early intervention for struggling learners, which, as we know, is the basis for our future success. I think we need to look at stability and consistency in our state, as it relates to our policies and our funding, in regards to making sure we're supporting the people doing the work down in the field. And last, I would highlight that we need to continue to work very, very hard on addressing poverty. And so, those are the big things that I'd like to talk about, at least in my mind, that I think can move us from where we're at, to being a leading state in our country. And I'll start with teacher quality. The research is overwhelming. In regards to the work that we can do as educators, and what we have control over, teacher quality is the one thing that will make the most difference, as it relates to working with kids. I would highlight that when the Center for Michigan went across the state a couple of years ago, asked some citizens across the state of Michigan, "What do you think we ought to focus on in education?" They told us teachers. They said, "Supporting teachers and making sure we have quality teachers in front of kids." That's what they told us. A ton of research out there that would support that in many ways. The work of the Midwest Education Trust and many others have outlined that, if we're going to focus on something, we need to focus on teacher quality, and what we can do to improve teacher quality, in order to improve student achievement. And when we think about that, many of the things that I will talk about as we go through that, will be how we can support the people doing the work out in the field, to move them to new levels. And so, there's a lot of research, as it relates to how we can support teachers. A lot of the educational research actually supports research done by the Gallup Institute. The Gallup organization has, for years, done research in regards to engaged, quality, productive employees, and what that work looks like. And it's interesting, we were looking at this in our school district many years ago, and it's just so logical, in regards to this type of work, and how this can move people forward. And it just makes so much sense that, you know, it's a clear place for us to focus, and it ties into the educational research. And so, when you look at the work of Gallup, I mean, they basically look at these types of employees that are very productive employees, and they find out that, number one, they want to know what their expectations are, they want to know what's expected of them, they want to know if they'll have the resources to do the job, they want to know if someone's going to recognize them for their work, they want to talk to someone within six months, they want to talk to someone as it relates to their progress and their performance, they want to know what the organization's mission is, and what their vision is, and they want to know that their opinion counts. Those are some pretty basic things, as it relates to what we can do to lift employees doing the work with kids every day. And it ties right into the educational research. And so, if you're looking at Schmoker and Fullen and the gurus that we know today, they talk about the same things. They talk about setting clear expectations for staff, which ties into that first item. They talk about having a clear, coherent curriculum. And that ties right into, well, I have the resources that I need to do my job. They talk about regular performance evaluation and monitoring, which ties right into the, you know, will someone talk to me every six months about how I'm progressing in my work? They talk about having teachers have an opinion and having a voice, as it relates to the work. And that's tied exactly into what Gallup says, after testing this through millions and millions of employees over all sorts of sectors, in regards to what makes people effective. And so, I think if we can do that, we definitely can be moving our teachers forward, which will be the most significant things that we can do to move our students forward. And so, focusing on intense teacher training is a critical component. I don't know if you're aware of the Galileo Institute, down in the tri-county area. It's a specialized teacher training program. I've been lucky enough to be the chairman of the organization on two different occasions now, chosen by my peers to represent the work of the Galileo Institute. It's an intensive, two-year program for teachers, to have them both expand themselves as leaders, but leaders as teachers. And I have to tell you, if you've talked to any teacher that's ever gone through this program, it's been a, they would call it a life-changing experience for them. It's that kind of work that we need to do with teachers. We need to provide opportunities for collaboration, an opportunity for them to talk to their colleagues about their work, what they're seeing with their kids, what they're doing to modify and adjust what's going on in their classrooms. We've got a lot of models right now, as it relates to providing that work, and so, that's good. You'll see school districts doing it in different ways. Some school districts may have a early release, some teachers find common planning time within the day by grade level, a lot of different things that schools do to provide that support. But I think we need to take it a step further. One of the things that we learned in Livonia was, when we provided this time and supported schools in finding that time to collaborate with each other, what we were finding is that, when they were getting together, they didn't know what to do. And so, they would get together, and they weren't nearly as productive as they could have been, because we didn't provide the training and the leadership to make sure that they were productive with that time, and they knew what to look at. You know, what kind of data should we be looking at? What should we talk about? What do you want to focus on? And there's a lot of support out there that we can give teachers, to have them be able to even have those conversations. And so, a lot of these things, as we talk about what we can do to step it up with teacher quality and provide support with them, has to really have to do with going the next mile. Evaluation, as it relates to that issue of having regular and consistent feedback, very, very, very important. And we've got a great model. You know, the group that put together, led by Deborah Ball at Michigan, that put together the evaluation work, did an excellent job in regards to identifying different models and different ways that we can provide good information for our principals, working with teachers, and evaluating them and providing them feedback. So, we've got a great model there, but again, I'd ask that we take it a step further, because it's one thing to have a great teacher evaluation tool, it's another thing to actually provide good feedback, because you know, when you walk into their classroom, what good instruction looks like. And so, what we've done in Livonia, just as an example, is we've spent a lot of time, and it came out of the request of the principals. They say, "We need help with this. We've got a, we've got a good tool here, but we need help." And so, we set up a series of in-services for our principals, to have them identify and work on how to do a good teacher evaluation, how to do good observations, how often can I get into classrooms, how can I create time to get into classrooms, what should I be looking for, how can I talk to teachers about improving their craft? This is an important step in the process, because the best evaluation tool doesn't mean a whole lot, if you don't have people that know how to use it. So, I would take that a step further, as it relates to what we can do to really improve our teaching craft in our school district and in our community.
Randy, I'm sorry to interrupt, but are there a couple other major points you want to make about improving education?
Yes.
We need to keep plenty of time for questions and more give and take, if you're able.
No, I appreciate that, and I'll hit the next items quickly. And I know that teacher quality is the one that I really did want to focus on and spend the most time on. I would also highlight, creating high expectations for students and staff is very, very important. I think we're in a good position with our Michigan standards right now, in regards to being able to do that. Again, I think in regards to how we can support that, I would just provide an example that was important to us. As we worked on this, we asked our schools to make a presentation to our school board on a regular basis, in regards to their building school improvement plan. So, they have to sit in front of the board, talk about what they're doing, what achievement data they're looking at, what strategies they have in place, et cetera, what's going on in their school. And we just had one of these presentations a couple of weeks ago, and I was so encouraged with the way that our Board of Education addressed this issue, because the staff shared with us that, looking at basic reading skills for kids in their school, the kids were getting the basic concepts. Very high percentage of kids were meeting the proficiency targets for basic concepts. But when it came to those critical thinking skill, high-order thinking skills, that we want out of kids, that we know will make them successful in the long haul, which is new for us, that's new for us, we found that a lot of our kids are not meeting those targets. A lot of those kids aren't meeting those targets. And they laid that out there, and they talked about what they wanted to do, to make sure that those kids are meeting these targets. Because, as the principal said in the school, I know, it's a K through 4 school, said, "I know if my 4th graders walk out, meeting the proficiency targets that we've set in the Michigan curriculum, they're going to be fine. I will never have to worry about them." What a powerful statement. And our Board of Education afterwards came up and said, "You know, it wasn't that great." And it could have been easy for them to say, "Boy, gosh, did you see how poorly they're doing on those new standards? Oh, my God, aren't we worried? Aren't we scared? What's going on? Are we doing something wrong?" That was not the response from our Board of Education. The response was, "They're looking at the right stuff, we're so excited about what they're doing, our kids are going to get a better education because of this." And I would hope that that would be the kind of support that we could provide, here at the state level, when we talk about working with teachers and principals, moving these new standards forward. So, high standards, a big support. Early intervention for struggling learners, we'll talk about that more, I'm sure, with different questions that will be coming up. But we know that we're racing against the clock, as it relates to making sure that kids in the 3rd grade meet proficiency targets. We know that that's a key point for us, and we need to do a lot, as it relates to early intervention, to help struggling learners. Stability and consistency, again, I'm sure we'll touch on school funding and school finance, but providing consistency for the people and stability for the people doing the work in schools is paramount, in regards to making sure that they're focusing on the teacher quality issues, the high expectation issues that I talked about. And so, we have to find a way to do that here in Michigan. We know that it's been a struggle. I'm certainly encouraged with the adequacy study that is on the agenda to supposedly be done. I certainly believe that I'm someone who can help with that, with my background and my knowledge in school funding for the last 28 years. But I'm excited about that, because I think that's going to provide us an opportunity to focus, not on just dollars and cents, but focus on what do we need to provide kids to make sure they're meeting these standards? And then we build a budget from there. And so, my only suggestion is that we work very closely with our legislature, our governor on that. We certainly don't want to be in a position where this turns into a lawsuit, and we're waiting 10 years for a resolution down the road. And so, working together with the key players on this, I think, is a way to move that forward. And again, last, addressing poverty, which the theme in all of these items is quality instruction, quality instruction, quality instruction. And so, many of the items that we need to look at, or we can look at, to improve on and continue to work on, or work on in a new way, has to do with providing quality teachers in classrooms. And so, with that, I'll cut my comments short and you can move on to...
No, I'm sure we've got about 20 questions to ask. They will allow you to elaborate on some of the points you didn't get to spend time on, that you may have wanted. And also, we don't need to repeat, meaning if there's things that you've talked about that the question has remained, too, we will try to note together. You've provided us some solid perspective on that as well. And so, two or three minutes per question, but we'll also, we'll allow plenty of time to make sure we're covering all the ground you want to cover, and appreciate your being here. So, Cassandra.
So, if you can describe and offer some examples of your experience in successfully improving education and learning outcomes for students?
Well, I would go back, again, to starting with having a common, shared vision within our school district, which is really the basis for everything that we've wanted to do. And if you look at some of the goals that we've had, as it relates to that shared vision that we have, they tie directly into improving instruction. And so, one of the big things that we've been working on in our school district is meeting the needs of struggling learners. And so, in our school district, we have created a committee called the Operation Student Success Committee. And they have done intensive work in regards to research and best practice, as it relates to providing that core quality instruction. And the message is simple. We need to, at the base, have core quality, good instruction for every single classroom in our school district. And so, the motto we use is, "Every child, every classroom, every school, every day." And the work that they've been doing is providing skills and ideas for teachers, to make sure that that's what their focus is on. We trained every single one of our elementary teachers, over the last couple of years, in these practices, and to make sure that, at the start, we're providing core quality instruction in every classroom. Separate from that, then, we're working on tiered intervention. And so, for the students that are getting this quality instruction, if they're still struggling, we're doing regular, what we call, universal screeners, to monitor our students' progress. And if they're not making progress, we're going to take a step, then we then take a step back, and it's all hands on deck. And so, whether you're a social worker, whether you're a research room teacher, whether you're the classroom teacher, whether you're, in our case, we're fortunate enough to have a elementary support teacher in every one of our schools, to support this kind of work, all hands are on deck, to make sure that we're looking at every kid, and making sure that they're meeting those benchmarks. So, that's one big thing that we've done in our school district. I'm really excited about what we've done in the high schools, that relates to reducing our achievement gap between our different subgroups. We've made significant progress in the last four years, as it relates to our black students, as it relates to our students who come from disadvantaged homes, and as it relates to our special education students. We've seen a multi, I mean, percentages in the 10%, 20%, 30% growth areas in those areas, and that is separate from, you know, a much smaller increase that we're seeing overall with all of our students. And so, that's been exciting for us to watch, and it's really a focus on...
Randy, we've got to keep moving on some other...
Thank you.
Michelle?
Okay. Well, this might allow you to continue. How was your past experience otherwise prepared you for this position?
Actually, you know, I think when you look at why I'm sitting here today, and why I was named superintendent 12 years ago, and you look at my background, it's really been based on my ability to get people to work together in teams, get people to have a common mission, get people to trust each other, and most of all, I've got an ability to be able to break down pretty complex issues and create paths to move forward. And that's not an easy thing in education. You guys all know, we like to talk about things, and we like to talk, and we like to talk, and we like to talk. But at some point in time, it's important for us to identify what's important for us, and break down what we can do and move forward. And when I look at being named Assistant Superintendent, Wayne Westland was not a teacher. It was very unusual to have an Assistant Superintendent who was not a teacher, back in those days. And it was because of these relationships that I had built throughout the school district, with teachers and et cetera. And in that ability to be able to solve problems and bring forward the good work, it was carried through in my time in Livonia, working in a variety of things that weren't finance, always finance-related. And by the time they named me superintendent, it was because I had been able to work in all sorts of areas of the school district. In fact, I was in charge of instruction for a period of years, because they knew I could work with our instructional staff, and I could get them focused, and I could say, "Okay, well, here's where we're going to go. Let's get a plan." And we put the plan in place, and then we monitor it. And so, I've had just a variety of opportunities to do that. And really, in the last 12 years as superintendent, it's grown well above and beyond my work in Livonia. And really, I gave one example of the Galileo Teacher Institute, that I've been asked to chair twice. I'm the, I was the president of the Wayne County Superintendent's Group. I'm going to be the chairman of the Tri-County Alliance of Superintendents. I am the representative of all Wayne, Oaklum, and Combe County at MASA legislative meetings. And so, I've been a voice for education in a lot of different venues. And, you know, I've done off the record a couple of times, I've been on Nolan Finley's show a couple of times, Beckman's show. I get called regularly when there's an education issue, they do call me, and my peers do ask me to respond on behalf of all of us, as someone who knows what's going on in the field. And so I think all of those experiences have led me up to being in a position where, you know, I know what's going on in Michigan, I know what's going on in my fellow school districts, and I know what I can do to bring people together and move people forward.
You may have just spoken as much as you want or need to to this question, which is any other examples of success in organizing, moving disparate stakeholders outside interest of your own staff around a shared vision for improving education?
Separate from the shared vision that we create in Livonia that you have a copy of, absolutely, you know, whether it's been the Tri-County Alliance of Superintendents, again, or the Wayne County Superintendents up at MASA, I think I have helped to be a voice to not only provide ideas and solutions, but to bring people together to say, okay, well, how, what are we going to do about this? We need to come up a solution and we need to put a plan in place. And I'm regularly the one at these meetings to talk about, okay, well, if this is what we want to accomplish, what are we doing? Right now, we're talking a lot about the ballot proposal in May. And we think we need, we have a responsibility to inform people about what this means. And so I sat down, talked to my colleagues, I said, you know, we need to create a spreadsheet. We need to put every school district down. And we need to find out what we're all doing as it relates to getting out this important message in regards to what Prop. 1 means for local schools and what it means for Michigan. And that way, people can fill in on the Google Doc what they've done and, you know, we can call our colleagues and say, you know, hey, I see you haven't talked to your staff about this yet. Do they understand Prop. 1? Did they notice it about? That would be one example of things that I've tried to spearhead over the years with our different organizations to move us forward.
Thank you, Randy. Eileen, I think you have the next different question.
Hi. One of the most important tasks of the superintendent is developing with the State Board policies and a strategic plan for improving education and then advancing it effectively with the general public, the governor, the legislature, and educational interest groups. How would you describe your experiences and approaches in doing this successfully? And I know you have already talked about that a bit. But how would you work with differences in vision, direction, and expectations held by legislators, the governor, and the State Board of Education?
Well, I think the good news is that especially in the last, and I'm going to say in my own opinion, in the last, you know, six to nine months, there are a lot of things that different stakeholders are coming forward with that we can work together on. And so from a big picture standpoint, for me, it's finding those things that we have in common. And if we believe that that's going to move Michigan forward, that's what we ought to be spending our energy and time on. And it's exciting to hear legislators and the governor talk about early childhood education, preschool. It's exciting to hear them talk about literacy, the need to have our kids proficient at 3rd grade level. It's exciting to hear them talk about college and career education, which is something that's a passion of me and my colleagues. And so it's finding those commonalities and working together and listening, being good listeners, and listening to people about what they think can move education forward. And, boy, I think we can get people on board supporting teachers and supporting the work of creating quality teachers. And, you know, so it's those types of things that I think we can find commonality with. And that's what I've tried to do in my work, leading up to where I'm at today, and I think I've been successful at, in order to move projects forward.
Thanks.
Thank you. Kathy?
Hello, Randy.
Hi. How are you?
Good.
Good.
What do you think are the important and fundamental purposes of public education?
Yeah, first of all, the work that we do is the most important governmental function that there is. If we think about our future, the future of our kids, what our country's going to be down the road, it comes back to education. And that's how I think an accountant ends up sitting in front of you, talking about being state superintendent, because I have that passion and belief that our work is the most important work that we do. And really, it comes down to making sure when our kids leave, that they're ready for college, that they're ready for a job, that they're ready to be good citizens in our society. Those are the key elements that we're looking for. And we're getting more sophisticated as it relates to what that looks like for kids. And so, you know, we're focused right now on, we know that that means that they have to be critical thinkers, we know that they have to be collaborators, we know that they have to use technology, we know that they have to be able to research, and we know that they have to be able to problem solve. They need to be able to be given a problem and solve it. And so I think we're much more sophisticated in regards to what college and career rate looks like now. And that's going to put us in a position to be able to create our curriculum, our work in moving that forward.
Thank you.
Lou Patey?
Hello.
Hi.
How are you?
Good.
Please speak to the issues of what policies, practices, and/or actions are important to pursue in order to improve teacher and educator preparation, quality, support, morale, and effectiveness?
Well, I think that's huge. Actually, it was one item that I didn't get to as I was talking about teacher quality. I talked about the things that we want to do in the short term, but definitely in the long term, I think we need to have a very serious conversation about what we're going to do to elevate the profession. And when you look at what other countries do when it relates to the teaching profession, we know that they work very hard to recruit the very best talent into the profession. They have high standards as it relates to being able to get into the college, teaching colleges in other countries. It's hard to graduate from these teaching colleges. And so, you know, that type of discussion and work as it relates to elevating the profession, I think is important. So it's not only the teacher prep piece of that, but it's that conversation of what are we going to do to elevate the profession? Because, I mean, the truth is, and I don't think any of you are surprised, that teachers feel, to some extent, pretty beat up right now in regards to their perception of how people value them. And we need to lift that. We need to lift that. And part of doing that is talking about what we're doing to prepare teachers and what we're doing to value teachers once they become professionals.
Thank you.
Okay.
Hello.
Hello.
What is the role of accountability systems in public education and what else has to go along with accountability systems to improve learning?
Well, I think they have a big role. I think when you look at accountability systems, there's different pieces of that puzzle. I think the most important accountability measures are at the school. And those ongoing measures that occur on a daily basis in regards to monitoring how kids are doing, and it's those formative assessments and the work that teachers are doing to make sure their kids are moving forward on a weekly basis, daily basis, monthly basis, are the ones that are going to make the most progress. But separate from that, we need to have big picture accountability measures. We have to. I mean, we can't just say, oh, yeah, well, we think things are going well in the schools and everybody's doing okay and we heard that they've got good formative assessments in place. And that's not good enough. You know, we have to have overall ways for us to measure how kids are doing in school also. And if that's handled in the right way, to where we're using that information to improve what's going on in schools, to improve what's happening in classrooms, then that can be positive. I think one important piece of that is that whatever we use for accountability, we need Staff struggle with what they feel that being the target changing on a somewhat regular basis. We know, and, you know, I understand that federal regulations often have a lot to do with that and we're responsible to, you know, meeting certain federal requirements. I hope we can have a role with the federal government as it relates to what those requirements are. But we need consistent measurements and standards so people know, and again, getting back to that gallup, you know, what's expected of me? Do I know what's expected of me? We need to tell people what's expected of them and have consistent measures over a period of time. So very, very important. There's big picture things that we need to do and we need to look at, and then there certainly are more important things happening in the classroom every day to make sure kids are moving forward.
Thank you.
Eileen, I think you're...
Michigan, like many other states, has seen some recent policy debates about the nature and utility of state learning standards and assessments, including the Common Core standards in math and English Language Arts, and our need to update our science and social studies standards that will be coming along soon. What's the role of standards and assessments in your eyes in improving student learning? And where do you recommend we should go in those, in our policies regarding both of those?
Well, again, I think high standards are key. And I think the Michigan standards that have been created put us in a position to be able to move our kids to new levels. And so I think that's very, very important. Again, it's, in my mind, how we support our staff to get to those high standards, that's really, really important. It's not about, you know, you're not there and what are you doing? It's about what are we doing to lift you to get you there? But having said that, those, the standards that we have are good standards, and I think they definitely put us in a position to move our kids forward. Again, I use the example of the principal that I was talking to. He said, if our 4th graders can meet these proficiency standards, I will not worry about them. They are going to be fine. And that's a key piece. The assessment piece, again, you know, I mentioned how important the assessment work that happens at the local level is in regards to student learning. We need to have assessment standards or assessments here that help provide us feedback, too, on a big picture basis and how kids are doing and how we're doing compared to others. You know, I mean, in our school district, we spend a lot of time looking at our standardized tests, even though it's a one test on one day, and it's not going to mean as much as the formative assessments that are going to move kids along. It gives us a picture of where we're at compared to our neighbors. And so every year, I look at the tri-county, every school district in the tri-county area, and we set a target for ourselves. And we say, you know, we want to be in the top 25 percent of all districts in metropolitan Detroit. And it's a standard that we're always, pretty much right on the cusp of, so it's a real good standard for us to push for. And we use the state assessment to do that. We also use the, we take 18 school districts that are similar socioeconomically to our school district or our neighbors, and we look at them and we take all of their data as it relates to socioeconomics, poverty, housing values, home income, et cetera. We average that out and we want to be a little bit below the average as it relates to the standards in our community compared to our neighbors, but we want to be above the average and above the median as it relates to our test scores. And so we use those standardized assessments to take that snapshot of, you know, where we're at, you know, and to give us feedback, you know, are we falling behind? Are we missing the boat? And so those standardized assessments are important for a lot of reasons, both for local school districts and for us as a state, to measure how we're doing. And also the national tests that we provide so we can compare ourselves to other states.
Thanks, Randy.
Thanks.
Cassandra?
There have been a number of so-called education reform ideas advanced in recent years. Which of these do you think are worthy of exploration and which would you recommend against?
Teacher quality is the most important. So a consistent theme here for me. Following the research in regards to setting clear expectations, having a good, strong curriculum, measuring how we're doing against that curriculum, and lifting teachers up to get to that point. And so I think that ought to be the focus, and I think research shows us that's how we can move our school district, our school district, our state, forward in the most meaningful way. And I think we can look to other states that have done similar types of things to see improvement. And so while I don't agree with everything that I've seen some of these other states do, setting the high standards and providing professional development and teacher support to move them forward are key components in Tennessee, Maryland, Massachusetts, those are some states that I can think of right off the top of my head. I like the reform effort to support early intervention and not to be a bad, a bad reform would, in my eyes, to be to retain students, as we talked about in 3rd grade. From people in the field who were looking at that, they were just astonished that that was being considered. But the process of supporting kids to making sure that when, by the time they're in 3rd grade, they're successful is a, is a big reform that can make a difference. And we're seeing other states also providing that kind of support in regards to moving kids forward. Using testing for high stakes, I think, is a bad, a bad move. Like I said, I think it's important for us to have that as a measurement for our state, and we can use it for a variety of good things, but not for high stakes to somehow we're going to punish people in regards to something that happens that could have been that class, that group. It just, there's too much fluctuation in regards to, and I'm talking from a school district that's pretty darn big. I can only think of a school district with 1,000 kids, which means they have 100 kids at a grade level, and what they're trying to do and the changes they would see in 3rd graders every year. So those are the reforms I think that are important and the ones that I would stay away from.
Thank you. I've got the next question. Describe the role of technology generally and the place of virtual blended and cyber learning in education. And how can technology and these tools or opportunities be used to improve learning and educational outcomes?
It is absolutely beyond exciting, the types of tools that teachers have at their fingertips because of technology. We're in the process of doing a $195 million bond renovation in our community, some, one of the accomplishments that I'm very, very proud of. And one of the big selling points certainly was the investment out of that bond issue to go towards technology. And we watch teachers who are able to, at a couple touches on a keypad, be conversing with kids across the country, across the world, pulling up a lesson plan, and they're in the middle of a volcano during a science lesson. I mean, it's just, it's just, it's just so exciting to think where we are at. It's almost, actually, almost overwhelming because, again, I'm a person who, if it's this big and it's this complex, okay, how are we going to break it down and how are we going to use this to move us forward? I think that's probably our biggest challenge because the amount of resources available to us right now are just remarkable and are just going to be able to move us, move us forward in many ways.
Part of the question was, can you speak to the role of virtual learning and cyber schools?
Yes.
In education?
Yeah, well, they have a role, and I think there is certain advantages that they can provide and certain alternatives that they can provide. My biggest caution is that what the research has shown and what I've seen in school districts that have worked on implementing this, that if there's not the proper support, kids don't do well. And so they have to, they have to have the proper support to make sure that they're moving along with their studies, with their lessons, in order to make sure that they're getting out of the experience what they can. So if that component's in place, there's a lot of value to that. It provides alternative for kids, and we have kids who need alternatives. We have kids walking into our high school that are, and it's all anxiety ridden, they can't, they can't walk down the hallways. Those kids, those kids need alternatives and we need to make sure to be able to provide whatever options we can to make sure that they're going to have a successful learning experience.
Thank you. Michelle?
All right. What experience do you have? It's multi-part, so let me warn you. What experience do you have with special education? What do you think the direction and agenda for special education in Michigan needs to be to improve education and employment outcomes? And finally, and how would you work to ensure special education students, parents, and stakeholders are included in the process of improving special education? Yeah, a lot.
Yeah, yeah. And actually, I think the area of special education is a strength of mine. Our school district not only provides a variety of local programs, but we provide county-wide center-based programs. We have a program for cognitively impaired students from preschool all the way up to 26. We have a visually impaired program. We have a program for students with autism. We have a skills center, actually, that takes students that are eligible for an education through 26, but they have not received a diploma. And so they have a place to go and get life skills and to get actually job skills. And so we have a variety of different programs, and I'm well-versed and experienced in regards to all the processes that are in place for families, parents. The state board, Michigan Department of Education plays a big role in that. You have a variety of processes in place, due process in place for parents to make sure that, that their kids are getting the needs, their needs met. And so a lot of background in education as it relates to special education and as it relates to how we, how we move forward, I think some of the things that we're seeing are very positive. I know when I was in Wayne Westland and we had big county programs in Wayne Westland, the Special Education Department and the General Education Department didn't talk to each other. You know, they had completely different curriculums, they had different... seeing are very positive. I know when I was in Wayne Westland and we had big county programs in Wayne Westland, the special education department and the general education department didn't talk to each other. You know, they had completely different curriculums, they had different ideas. And that has changed significantly over time. And that's been a real positive in my eyes as it relates to what we're doing for kids with disabilities. And so, we're seeing the curriculum being much more uniform. And we're seeing the outcomes and objectives much more tied in to what's expected of all kids. And we're certainly seeing the general education staff and the special education staff working as one because they're all our kids. And really, they need to be considered all, you know, all the same. They just have a different level of, of learning need. And so, I think that direction is, been a positive direction, but we need to continue to push that in if we want to move forward. When we look at parents and their involvement, in our school district, we have a parent advisory council that's a great place for parents to come, share their concerns, share what they would like to see happen. We're very proud in our school district over the last couple of years that out of those conversations with parents, and actually a couple of parents coming to the board meeting, talking about the needs of their children who are going to go to the skill center for that program I mentioned after, after high school. But they had higher cognitive abilities than other kids in the program and they wanted a different experience. And so, we're actually partnering with Schoolcraft College now to where they can go to college and they can experience a college class and be on a college campus and receive their learning in that environment. And, you know, that's just one way that we can reach out and continue to find new ways to reach out to kids. And last, I would just say that not only have I had those experiences as a professional, but I've had those experiences as a parent. I have a special needs child. I've been going to IP since she was three. And so, I know from the other end what that means, what that looks like. Putting my child on the bus when she was three was a scary experience, I have to tell you. But a happy ending. She, hopefully this year, will be graduating from Michigan State University.
Awesome.
And, and only because of the support that she received by some remarkable educators through her, through her time.
Thank you, Randy. Kathy.
Well, Randy, what do you think should be the role of choice, school choice and charter schools in improving education, learning and education outcomes?
Yeah, you know, the, it's interesting because when you look at the purpose of charter schools when they, when they came into, into being, and I hope I don't look that old, but I was there when it all happened. I was there for Proposal A. I was, I've got a whole story in regards to Proposal A and what we were able to do in Wayne Westland when that, when that went, when that happened. But, you know, I've, I've watched the charter school movement over time and the concept of providing innovative opportunities for kids that maybe they wouldn't get at their local school is one I think that everybody can support. You know, we can, we can support that. The struggle is, and what we've seen is this tug between charter schools, public schools. And why is there that tug there? Because at the end of the day, you know, it's the name on the other side of the building. What's important is what's happening inside the building. But the tug has to do with finances. And the bottom line is the way that we fund schools in the state of Michigan, you're in a position to where if you lose 10 students, that could impact 300 students in your school district. And so, when you look at school funding, you know, in my school district, if I lose one student in every building, that's a quarter of a million dollars that we've lost. And so, I can't cut a quarter of a million dollars of expense as I've lost one kid in every one of our schools. We have 1,700, 1,800 kids at our high schools. If they have 1,799 instead of 1,800, I can't reduce any costs. And so, that's the challenge and the tug that you've seen when you talk about charter schools, public schools. It's based on the way the schools are funded and, you know, it's a, it basically creates winners and losers. And that's not what our education system ought to be about. We should not be creating winners and losers in our education system. And so, if we could find a different way as it relates to how charter schools were funded, I think you'd feel, I think you'd see a whole different opinion in regards to what that looks like. And, you know, in, in, in my community, you know, I, I just went through a bit of a controversy myself with the charter school last year, where it was a school that we actually started and we actually were the charter authorizer. But we felt at the end of the day, it was going to be better off under our, under our umbrella. And we know it was better for kids. We know it was the right thing to do. But boy, people got excited about that because it was charter schools versus public schools. I was saying, my gosh, what difference does the name on the side of the building make? It's about what's going on inside of those schools, making sure that they're getting everything that they need. So, if we can get beyond some of that issue, I think, I think we have a different, a different feel and a different tug on that. But it's a tough thing when there's a win-loss proposition because that, that isn't what we should be doing in education.
Thanks, Randy. Pam.
What experience have you had in successfully turning around underperforming schools? And what do you see as effective approaches to school turnaround?
It gets back to quality teaching. And when you look at the research in regards to failing schools and what we can do to support failing schools, it comes down to what can we do, again, within those classrooms and within those walls? And so, to me, it's not about as much of a structural issue about who's in control of them or what umbrella they fall under. It's about making sure what's going on in that, in those classrooms is meeting the needs of those kids. And so, if we're doing a good job in regards to providing quality teachers, and that's a big challenge, but if we can work on that, that's going to make a difference. I think if we can garner our resources and get community partners involved, the research is pretty clear. And you only need to talk to teachers, you know, in, in working in schools with the kids that are, that are living in poverty. They need to have their basic needs met first. We need to make sure that we're supporting kids and that they're walking to school with their basic needs met. And we, we can't do that alone. We know we can't do that alone. But we can do that with partnering with a variety of different agencies. And we can reach out in a lot of different ways to make sure the kids are coming into school with those basic needs. And then, we have to start working on what we're doing to provide additional opportunities for these kids. It's about access to quality education. It's about access to opportunities outside of school. You guys have probably heard the research. By the time a student, a student or a child living in welfare, he is three years old, he's heard 30 million fewer words than a child who lives in a high-income family. Research out of Kansas. What are we doing to bridge that gap? What are we doing to provide universal preschool for students? What are we doing, again, I'm going to focus on, most importantly? It's one thing to say a school's failing. Let's walk into the school, walk down the hallways, talk to the principal, look at their school improvement plan, talk to their teachers, and find out if they're really doing everything that they can for those kids in that school. If they are, then we need to support them in different ways. If they're not, then we have to deal with that issue under some, under some type of structure or, or umbrella, whatever that might look like.
Thank you. Lupe.
Okay. As State Superintendent of Public Instruction, you would manage and be accountable for the performance of the Michigan Department of Education. What are directions for change and improvement in the work of the department? And/or what process would you use to learn how to understand, identify, and make such improvements?
Well, I think we first have to start with, going back to what I talked about initially, with our shared vision. And so, the State Board of Education and the superintendent and stakeholders out in schools and people that work in the department that are working directly with schools, we need to find out, first of all, we need to create that shared vision and find that direction. And then, we need to look at our departments and say, okay, are we supporting what's most important that we've identified and the things that we want to make progress on in here in Michigan? My experience is that there are a lot of very talented people working for the Michigan Department of Education, a lot of very dedicated workers. And so, the question is, from a standpoint of what we can do to improve that, we need to take a look at every single department, see how their work is matching the work that we've set out that we want to get accomplished, and making sure that it matches up. And making sure that they're doing everything that they can to support schools. We need to be good listeners in regards to the field. Again, I think that's something that I bring to the table as someone who's been in the field for 28 years. I know what the impact of the Michigan Department of Education and their different departments are in our daily work. And so, when it comes to report redundancy, what can we do to take a look at, you know, well, we have to fill out this report for this department, this report for this department? What can we do to streamline that work so we have people focusing on what's good for kids in schools? That's the kind of work that we can do in the Michigan Department of Education. And, you know, I'm a big on continuous improvement. That's one of our big mottos in Livonia Public Schools. Regardless of what department you work in and where you're at, we're about continuous improvement. We use the Plan Do Check Act, a circle of improvement. We plan, we do it, we check to see if it's working, and if it's not, we make modifications. And every single department needs to make sure that they're doing that, that type of work also, to make sure they're providing the most meaningful support they can to local schools.
Thank you.
What do you see as the role of the superintendent and the Department of Education with local school districts and intermediate school districts?
Well, I, we're all part of the same system. And so, again, it gets, it gets down to each one of those entities, what are we doing in concert and in sync with each other to make sure that if you're a principal or a teacher in a school, that you're getting what you need to be successful? And so, you know, our ISDs play a significant role in regards to providing support to local school districts and to local schools. From everything, as, you know, everything from vocational programming, special education programming, leadership as it relates to school improvement, leadership as it relates to professional development for teachers, the list goes on and on in regards to what ISDs provide to local school districts in regards to supporting them. And so, from a department standpoint, we need to make sure that our efforts in each of our departments are aligned with the efforts that are going on at the ISD level to make sure that we're, number one, not crossing each other. Number two, we're not being redundant in regards to information that we're asking for or work that we're doing. We need to figure out how we can complement each other. And an example I will give is the work that the Michigan Department of Education has helped with, with focus schools and priority schools. The Michigan Department of Education helped to coordinate efforts to find people that would go and work directly with schools, school improvement teams, principals in schools to close achievement gaps and improve their, their student learning. And that resource has been great for us. And it's been great for a lot of my colleagues when I talk to them in, in local schools. That kind of support really makes a difference, to have someone come in with an objective look of what's going on in your school, an objective look at your student data, maybe a different idea in regards to how you can attack something. Boy, that's the kind of work that, that we like to see coming from the Michigan Department of Education.
Michelle.
Thank you. What has been your success as an educational leader in collaborating and partnering with business, labor, and the broader community, not the part? Please discuss specific partnerships or achievements due to these partnerships that have developed as a result of your leadership.
I actually, not only sit on our local Chamber of Commerce in Livonia, but I've been the chairman, past chairman of the Chamber of Commerce, which again is hopefully an example of people that see me as someone who can lead and as someone who knows how to put plans together to get things done. And we've done some very unique things as it relates to business partnerships in our, in our school district that we're very, very proud of. And this has gone on for quite some years. We actually have a business education committee of the Chamber of Commerce that meets with us on a regular basis to talk about what they can do to support us in our schools. And of course, the whole conversation around college and career readiness. And I hear from business people on a regular basis about what their needs are as it relates to kids when they come out of school. I talked about that a little bit earlier when I talked about college and career readiness and how we're much more sophisticated in regards to those needs. And, you know, so we're about working with our business, our businesses to provide that support. We have a Livonia Industrial Council. They're talking about their needs as far as workers and what we ought to be looking at. And they're partnering with us in a variety of ways to do that. We are currently providing a unique program. We have a career intern program in our school district, which is a vocational program. It's like a, the old co-op program. But the kids actually, one day out of their five days, comes to the school district and meets with the teacher, talks about not only what went on at work that week, but talks about what are the qualities that businesses are looking for in having a good student, in having a good employee. They learn how to do resumes. They learn team-building skills. They learn about, you know, come to work, show up, good attitude, all those types of things. We work with these kids on in this career intern program. And it's typically been focused on kids that are looking for some, a typical profession. So, they may be going to an engineering firm, they might be going to a hospital. And we've just expanded that this last year, based on a conversation that I was having with our leaders in our business community. And like Randy, you know, we need kids, we need kids that are good, high, there are good-paying jobs out there that are, that are kids that, that they don't have to have a college degree and, and, but, but they need to have these skills and here's what we're looking for. And, you know, what are you guys doing to help us? And I said, "Well, we need to get kids and families understanding that there are other opportunities out there, first of all." Because it's not if you build it, they will come. And our neighboring school district found that out when they built a program for manufacturing tech and kids weren't taking the class. And so, we have to, number one, educate people to do that. And we have to do these types of programs to where now this career intern program that I shared with you, we now are including a vocational career intern program. We have kids this semester that are literally in our plans and in our manufacturing businesses in our community, having that experience and are excited about it. They didn't know it was available, they're not sure they want to go to college, or if they go, they're going to go to Schoolcraft and maybe go into manufacturing tech. And they're making that connection. So, that's just one example. I've got several, but I know I'm over my three minutes.
Thanks. Who's next? Lupe.
Okay. Michigan and Michigan schools are very diverse in terms of race, ethnicity, culture, and socioeconomic levels. Please speak to your approach and give examples of your success in supporting diverse learners and poor children to success in schools.
A big issue in Michigan, and growing. We know that half of our kids in our state now qualify for a free and reduced lunch. In my community, the number of students that qualify for free and reduce, reduced lunch since I've been superintendent has increased by five, five-fold increase in regards to students that qualify for free and reduced lunch. We see changing demographics in our community also. And so, we've had this opportunity to watch this happen and say, what, as educators, are we going to do to address this? And so, I would go back to, in our school district, the program that I talked about, Operation Student Success, which is about reaching out to every one of our learners, wherever they're at, quality core instruction at the core, and then creating interventions for kids who are still struggling after they receive that support. It's been a significant initiative and something that every one of our elementary's teaching staff are involved in. Again, I would highlight at our secondary schools where we've, in my opinion, made the most progress in regards to meeting the needs of diverse learners, we're about learning what this means and bringing in professional development for staffs so they understand what they can do to support kids that are, kids that maybe they haven't seen in the last 10 years in their school. Or more kids that they haven't seen from different nationalities, different race, different socioeconomic background. And so, it's about providing that background and that knowledge to staff so they know how to lift these, these kids up in, in every way that they can. And one of the things that we're really focused on right now that's important to us as we watch this, and we struggle with transiguency and kids who we know, we have them for a year, and teachers are excited because they've seen them grow two grade levels in their reading, reading ability. And then, they come to register next year and they're gone. And we're saying to ourselves, what can we do about this? And so, we're really focused right now on looking at what we can do to give the kids the skills that they need to be successful, regardless of what position they're going to be in. It's, it's similar to bullying. You know, we can talk about stopping bullying. And we know that for time on end, kids have bullied each other. And into the future, kids are going to bully each other. But what we can do is we can equip kids to work with that. We can equip kids to deal with adversity. And, and that's going to provide them skills for a lifetime. Maybe you guys know about Leader and Me Schools, the Covey Program. Great program. We're doing it in multiple schools. And it's to the school's credit. It's not the school district saying, you know, this is what you're going to do. But it's schools, it's individual schools that stepped up and said, "This character education program makes a difference in kids. And it provides them the skills to be able to take responsibility for their own education." It's exciting work and it's growing across the state of Michigan and something that can really provide kids what they need to be resilient.
Thanks, Randy.
Thank you.
Eileen.
As MDE Superintendent, you would manage a large budget and complex organization, including federal compliance. You've already mentioned streamlining and reducing redundancies, I guess, actually is what I should say. Please describe your approach beyond that and success in managing a similar organization, if you wish. And what directions for improvement in the work of the department would you pursue, along with what process you would use to understand, identify, and make such improvements where you haven't already talked about it?
Yeah. And again, I think there's a lot of work that's been done in this area. And again, I think there's a lot of work that's been done in this area or at least it's been started. And so if you go to the MASA organization, they've started this work. Different regions have started looking at this type of work. In fact, I was working with one of our legislators over the last three years in regards to coming up with a list of reports that we have to complete to meet compliance and what we potentially can do to streamline those and to make those better. And so I think from a management standpoint, it really is sitting down and it's an opportunity for, for a person with a new set of eyes, you know? I mean, that's always, you know, no different than if I was to come here, the new superintendent in Livonia is going to come with a new set of, set of eyes and be able to provide value. I think just having a new set of eyes and coming in and looking at each one of the departments because there are skilled people that work here, but looking at those departments and identifying what we're doing and why we're doing it, you know, with that background information of here's how it impacts local schools. And I think we need to continue to work directly with the U.S. Department of Education in regards to things that we think are important. And so if we're finding things that by the time it gets down to the school level, we don't think's making much of an impact, I think we have to have a voice in that and we have to stand up and say, you know what? This particular compliance piece, I understand why you're doing it, but it doesn't make a whole lot of sense. I remember, well, I won't go into details because of time, but, but I think it's that Plan Do Check Act, every single department, what are we doing to make sure that we're supporting local schools and doing meaningful work? And if not, having a voice wherever we need to, to, if we, if we don't have control over it directly, to make the compliance more meaningful.
Thanks.
Two more questions for you, Randy, and then you'll have a chance to ask us questions or recap anything that you want to make sure we put forward. So Kathy, you have a next question?
Yeah. Randy, would you give us some of your specific ideas of how you would judge your own effectiveness as a state superintendent and how should the board evaluate your work?
Well, I think first of all, the process of identifying how we are doing as a state compared to how we've done in the past is an important component in evaluation. I, I am not shy of or scared of any type of evaluation as it relates to any kind of accountability measure, any kind of assessment that we may want to use. And so I think it's collaboratively sitting down and talking about, well, what's important to you? And let me talk about what's important to me in regards to what I think we need, we need to be looking at for, for our students. And so anything from graduation rates to how we're doing on our statewide standardized assessments to getting feedback, and I think this is a big piece, getting feedback from the field in regards to how they feel about the services of the Michigan Department of Education. Do they think they're, we are a support to them? Are we providing meaningful help in regards to their work? I think some kind of survey to schools and school districts out across the state would be a meaningful measurement and something that whoever the superintendent is can build on and build growth on. You know, certainly compliance matters, et cetera, are things that, that we're responsible for and we have to be on top of. And so, you know, different areas of compliance and also, you know, making, you know, my relationship with, you know, all the stakeholder groups. And so I, I talked about surveying schools, but we ought to talk about, you know, how the legislature and the governor feels about my work. We ought to definitely be talking about, you know, how citizens are feeling about the direction of education in Michigan. And so finding appropriate and effective tools within those different stakeholder groups, I think would be really valuable feedback to evaluate me on. At the end of the day, we need to look at, are our kids reading at third grade level? Are we graduating kids? Are they being successful in college? Are they getting jobs? We can find good measurements for that, not only for, you know, local schools, but I think that'd be a good way to measure me.
Thanks, Randy. The last, easiest question, why do you want to be superintendent of public instruction in Michigan?
You know, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a great question and it's amazing. The support I've gotten over the last week has been remarkable. I think I've received over 200 emails from well wishers in regards to their support for me doing this work. And so I think this really is just a growth, an outgrowth of my career. At my stage in my career, I won't tell you how old I am, you guys can see that out, but in my stage in my career, I've been doing this for a long time, but I'm really, you know, in my opinion, at the top of my game. I've been a superintendent for 12 years. I've been a top-line administrator for almost 25 years now in public schools and two very large school districts and have worked closely with entities across the state. And so I've got a good flavor for what's going on in my neighboring school districts, what's going on across the state of Michigan. I hear about what people's hopes are, what their frustrations are. And with that background and experience that I've had, I think that I can bring my skills, which again, I would focus on being able to take complex problems, break them down, find a path forward and bringing people along in that process. I think you'll find basically people like me. They like working with me, yet they know that I'm someone who has high expectations and I expect results. And so I think those skills, along with the experiences that I've had over the last many years, puts me in a position to be able to make a difference at a different level. And very honestly, you know, when I sat down and I looked at this and, you know, there are other opportunities for me and, and certainly as I've told everybody in Livonia, you know, I took the job, I'd be happy to retire from there, very happy to retire from there. But I have a chance to make a difference at a different level. And I think I've made a difference in a lot of different ways outside of Livonia in the last, really the last 10 years. And, and I think people see me as someone who can make that difference at a, at a larger, at a larger level. So it's my passion for education. I mean, that's, that's really why I'm here. My gosh, an accountant who started, you know, in an accounting firm, sitting in front of you, talking about all of these types of issues. It's my passion and my belief that this is the most important governmental function that we have.
You're, you're not the only accountant who's in significant leadership positions and cares about education. So those are our questions. Is there anything that you'd like to talk more about or share more and/or ask us about?
Well, you know, just, just a couple of things. I want to highlight how excited I am, not only about this opportunity, but how excited I am about education in Michigan. I'm an optimist by nature. That doesn't always fit with someone who's a taskmaster and who gets things done, but I truly am. And, you know, there are a lot of good things going on in Michigan as it relates to how we can move education forward here. I know it's been some tough years here. I know we have challenges coming up and, and these issues of poverty and, and other challenging issues aren't going away. But we have a lot of things in place right now with our graduation requirements, with the new standards that we have, that by the way, have been consistent. So teachers have been able to work on those for some time now. You know, those things are in place and with the technology and with the resources and with the knowledge that we have about how to help kids learn now, that is far more than we had 10 or 15 years ago. And I think in 10 years, we'll be more than we have today. We can make a difference. We can do a lot of really, really good things here in our state and we can be seen as a leader in regards to providing education for kids. If we stay focused on what's important, what makes common sense, we can, we, we can do wonderful things here. And I just want to make sure that you hear my passion about that and my belief and my optimism as it relates to what we can do for kids here in Michigan. That's where I'm at and I shared with you, you know, my specific strengths as it relates to not only my experience in working for 20, in, for 28 years in public schools, working with entities across the state of Michigan as it relates to public education, but more along my, more along my ability to bring people together, get people working towards a similar mission or a same mission and getting things done. I think, I think we can do great things and I, I know you guys want to do great things and I have to tell you how impressed I am with each of your backgrounds. I mean, I went on, I checked your bios out. My gosh, what a, what a remarkably bright and talented group of people you are. I'm sure you guys don't agree all, all the time. My board doesn't agree all the time and that's okay. But if we're working together, we, if we're working with common expectations for each other, you know, we're, we're going to find commonalities and we're going to move Michigan forward. As far as questions really, I mean, I think at this stage, you know, I may have some questions if I'm around next week, but at this stage, I think I'm okay.
Well, thanks. Let me just say by way of thanking you for coming forward, clearly as we learned about you and the, the confidence and trust your community has in you and the achievements there, you should be very proud of. You should also, your peers, I know around the state, have tremendous high opinion of you and your abilities. And I would just note, in spite of your relative youth, your-
Thank you.
Your smarts, your passion, your, your insight into what we need to do really shines through and you have a lot to offer the state and I just want to thank you for offering your service and appreciate your, your commitment to education.
Thank you very much.
Great. Why don't we, so we're, we're on schedule. We'll take a break for, we'll reconvene at 1:30 promptly and please say hi to everybody and off we go.